I will call the meeting to order for 31. Being live streamed. And welcome to the Board of Trustees of the Spokane Library Meeting on August 17. I will start with the land acknowledgement and then we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. This building sits on the traditional homelands of the four bands, the Spokane Tribe of Indians, Upper Band, Middle Band, Lower Band, and Chewahla Band. Since time immemorial, the Spokane Tribe of Indians has lived and cared, lived and cared for these grounds, identifying themselves as flesh of the earth. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present, and emerging. We show gratitude to the land, river, and peoples who have been fishing, hunting, harvesting, and gathering here for generations. May we learn from one another's stories so that we may nurture the relationship of the people of the Spokane Tribe and to all those who share this land. All right. We, do we have any proposed agenda changes? And if not, we can consider it adopted. Oh, we lost Nathan. See there, but just no video. Okay. All right, and then we will move on to approval of the July 21 board minutes. Can I have a motion?
I moved.
I moved, is it, did Nathan move?
He did.
I second it.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing none, motion passes. All right, and now we have approval of the July 2021 bills and contributions.
I move that we approve the July 2021 bills and contributions in the amount of $4,205,175.48.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. And now we will turn it over to Nicole for the financial report.
Thank you, Laura.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I'll just dive right in for library operations. So for our cash and investments trend, in July, we closed with the ability to pay 145 days of operating costs. That's in available cash and investments. We have received 15 of our 26 annual general fund allocations so far to date. And currently, our cash investment balance, net of encumbrances, and which includes the reserve for capital, is $4,780,030. And for our expenditure trend for July, the expenditures came to a total of $991,470. Of that amount, $675,660 was for personnel, and that also includes three paid periods. We spent $72,018 on books and materials costs. $16,313 was for interfund, which does include some third quarter charges as well. To date, we have spent and dedicated a total of 50% of our annual adopted budget. And in business office news, so recently, the city released the 2022 budget files. So currently, we're working on preparing our 2022 budget. The first edits are due to the city this Friday on August 20. So we are planning to bring the 2022 budget forward for board approval at our September Board of Trustees meeting. So it's a bit of an accelerated timeline this year, but we can handle it. So I would like to open for, for any questions before I pass it over to Penny with the bond.
All right, Penny?
Well, it was a $3.2 million month for the, for the bond. And we did not execute any contracts under the special authority. I did get a call from my friends at the state auditor's office, though, and they requested backup on our construction in progress as a part of the financial statement audit. They are still working through that. I haven't had any questions, and I always take that as a good sign. The topic of the month is furniture. It's basically just consuming our days in and out right now, so we, our budget was approved for procurement back in December by the board. And in July alone, we issued 37 purchase orders. And these are just for the Phase One projects right now. And that represents about one half of our committed budget. The group board did not make a provision for the Hilliard Ranch for furniture. And I'm hopeful that actually our, our budgets can absorb that. But in the meantime, I did have to advance some budget to Hilliard in order to issue the purchase orders. So at the close of the Phase One purchasing, if I feel like we're going to go over our approved maximum, I'll bring that back to the board and show you the financial snapshot. And some of the furniture purchasers are actually subject to Public Works installation regulations. And that would be for things like metal shelving that has to be bolted to the floor or some of our furniture items, like in the back office staff furniture, those have to be hooked to electrician, electrician, by an electrician, excuse me. And so those take a little extra step for us in terms of the installation process. I have Kara O'Malley joining me this evening, and he's going to give us a snapshot of furniture.
Well, hi, everyone. We have quite a bit of furniture to go through. And furniture outside of context turns out to be really boring. So I'm going to try to make this as quick as we possibly can. Is my PowerPoint showing up for all of you?
Yes.
All right, cool. So the all right. So the first thing that we're going to look at is children's furniture. These pieces that you're looking at right now are specialized pieces that are intended to accent the play areas. These are kind of off-the-shelf products that are going to provide a variety of different seating options in the children's play areas. The context in each of these is kind of key for telling you what it might be. So when you look at the, the far left, the gray beanbag, that one might be a lily pad at Indian Trail, or it might be a rock at Central. This was an exercise in finding the most whimsical pieces of furniture that we could that would sit inside of those children's areas and on the periphery for this sort of integrated seating that you see below with like collections and stuff and some of the, the benches. This next one, this next slide is showing the standard seating throughout all of our projects for children's areas. On the far left, you see some of the preschool furniture, the table and the chair and the, the natural wood grain. Those are going to be consistent. The blue outlined furniture are specifically chosen for teen areas and teen furniture that's sitting adjacent to teen collections. The rest that you see here is going to be spread throughout the system. The focus here was on comfort so that caregivers can comfortably observe their kids when they're on the play areas, which we expect now will be for extended periods of time. And also on width, so that there's plenty of opportunities to read together. So you'll see that a lot of these are double seat chairs or at least one and a half so that a parent and a child can sit side by side or a couple of kids can sit together. So that they have lots of opportunities throughout the library to spend time reading together. The public furniture here, or you're looking at our shelving unit. So we have not had these installed yet, and shelving units are kind of boring to look at. But these are going to be pretty cool for us because they include custom end panels that are going to create new opportunities for marketing and wayfinding, additional flexibility that we haven't had before. We're going to be able to reuse the existing shelving that we've had in the, in the branches to date in the staff work areas where it's not quite so important that the shelving be, you know, dynamic and flexible, but just were able to repurpose some of the older stuff without wasting it. We're going to have some improved merchandising and display, as you will see on the right there with a variety of displays and gondolas, all on wheels for maximum flexibility so that they can be shifted around. These are going to be the things that are going to populate the marketplace area of each of the branches. So you'll see there's lots of display space, very low shelving. That's also one of the changes that you're going to see in the shelving overall is that it's typically lower now or in the designs that we're working on now than it has been in the past. The next slide that we're looking at here is the public furniture that's going to be available in our event space. So we can see, basically, we've got meeting chairs and lecterns. So pretty straightforward and simple. The next slide is focusing on our variety of seating options. So on the upper left, you'll see the Hive stool. That's present in all of the work areas in the Hive and the different studios. And on the upper right, you will see the computer chairs for the public. So those are tasks, computer task chairs. And below, you see the cozy reading chairs. And in between the stool and the task chair, you see your kind of standard run-of-the-mill chair that is positioned around tables and such. So these are, there's a variety of them at different branches depending on the style. But these are the pieces of seating-related furniture that you will encounter when you enter. Here are the accompanying services, surfaces. So what we have here is lots of flexibility. So you see wheels. On the upper right, you've got the work table for the Hive Studios. Down in the bottom middle, you've got some of the, the tables with integrated electricity that will be placed throughout the branches so that they can be extra flexible. That was one of those things that we really tried to focus on was the ability to integrate power and to move them around as needed because we don't necessarily know how these things are going to be placed long-term. This next one that we're going to look at is our custom casework. These are custom pieces for very custom spaces and custom needs. So what you see in the upper, well, I guess just the up part on the top is the display kitchen at Shadle. And that is a, a custom-designed piece that's going to help us with our health and food-related education efforts at Shadle. Down in the bottom left, you've got some of the inland northwest history room display cases. There's going to be a, a number of these that will be used to display items in our exhibits. In the middle on the bottom there, you've got our public service desks, which again are flexible. You'll see that those are on wheels too and much smaller profile than what we're used to. So they'll be out on the floor so that our staff can, you know, eventually more closely interact with customers, not quite yet, though. On the right, we've got our, an example of our Library of Things cabinet, which is going to vary by location. So this actually does a good example of showing the variety of things that can be in the Library of Things display. So the kind of slats and hooks and sort of things that you might need to be flexible enough to display a collection like that as it goes into the future. The next slide here is showing us our staff furniture. So these are closed office configurations. There's been a range of styles to meet the needs for different meetings and different people having those meetings. Staff got to choose between formal, semi-formal, and informal workspaces to see what best matched their style and the culture of their department.
It looked cold in there.
Yeah, they haven't turned the heat on yet. The, what we're looking at now are the shared staff workspaces. So you are seeing our, our cubes, basically. And what's really interesting about these is that each, each, the staff at each department or branch got to this, got to weigh in together on what theirs would look like. So while they're all made of the same types of pieces, each one has its own unique elements and unique designs that really meet the needs of that particular department. So for some, you know, they really valued privacy, for others, valuing open collaboration. Some of the new features that we're seeing, that we haven't seen before, are whiteboards and screens and expandable hidden seating in these things so that we can have more impromptu meetings in our general workspace. And lastly, what we've got here are our break rooms. On the left, you see a larger one. On the right, you see a smaller one. What you don't see here pictured are the cozy reading chairs that we're also adding to this. But you do see that we're going to have a plethora of lockers for staff to store their personal effects. And that is furniture. I hand it back to you, Penny.
Great. Well, with that, I, I'd like to invite you to ask me any questions that you have about furniture. And, and if not, then we'll proceed on with Matt.
I don't have any questions. I think it all looks terrific. I don't think you, I don't think you should give, let any visitor, though, regardless of their status, sit on the furniture like that. I just want you to know.
You know, that was Andrew's call, Andrew's office. I don't know what to do. Maybe you can talk with him privately.
Chairs are for sitting. Other furniture is not for perching.
Well, thank you. Thanks, Karis, for joining me.
All right, excellent. Well, thank you, Penny, Nicole, and Karis. So now we will turn it over to Matt for update on the construction projects.
Thank you. Well, project, project closeout continues for Hilliard, Shadle, the Hive, and Liberty. Most of those projects already have, they're substantially complete, and they either have a TCO, a temporary certificate, certificate of occupancy, or a final certificate of occupancy, which Shadle does, as a matter of fact. Project teams are busy continuing to wrap up submittals, RFIs, change orders, last-minute changes. It's, there's a flurry of activity going on to try to get these projects done. Furniture is being delivered to the project sites, as mentioned earlier. And Carl Moses with Hill International is signing off on furniture, receiving furniture. The main library, the central library is still going strong. Lots of interior construction work going on. They're now working on the roof, replacing the roofing. And they're doing site work, and I don't know if you've driven by it recently, you can see the southeast corner, they're putting in the curtain wall and the archy framing pieces starting to look really nice. And then we still have South Hill and Indian Trail, and those projects will likely go out for bid in October. So that's kind of my rundown for the closeout phase of this month. Are there any questions? All right.
All right, sounds like, sounds like everybody's got the information they need. Thank you, Matt.
You're welcome.
All right, so next on the agenda is the chairman's report, and there is no chairman's report. So now we have the library executive director report.
All right, well, we'll start with the most exciting and most obvious, and that's, we opened up the Hive successfully last week, so great job, everyone. I think the event went really well. The community seems really excited about having this open space. It's already populated with our artists. Sean Brigman, who's going to be doing some exploration of canoe-making. Miguel Gonzalez, who's going to be building a lotteria of BIPOC leaders in Spokane. And then a duo of Chantel Jackson and Stephanie Rossi. They sort of interact with each other, and they're going to be seeing how their work goes with, with a larger scale. So using that studio space to give them more freedom to explore. And then Gwen Ziermuzi, she's a fiber artist. She had some QR codes that she was working with as well. So kind of this meld of fiber and technology, well, working with fiber is a technology. It's an older technology, but sort of a, a cross time period almost of, of these applications, which it's going to be really cool. They seem really excited to be there. We're so excited to have them in there. It's a, it's a great launch for that. Eva Silverstone helped, well, she led that process. So thank you to Eva for, for leading us through that. And we had great turnout. We had, I'd say, about 100 people there. Good round of speakers, mayor, state librarians, and council members. Laura opened up the session for us, so thank you. And the East Breg Business Association also had a representative there welcoming us to the neighborhood. It was hot, it was smoky, but it was fine. It, it went off really, really well. And it's just such a relief to really get that first project open and kind of shake some of those nerves out. Other than that, we do, you know, we, we have gone back to requiring masks for our staff. We know that the Delta variant is spreading in our community. So we made the decision to do that starting August 4. And as you know, we've also moved this meeting back to virtual. We were hoping to do it at the Hive, but it seems like a, a wiser decision at this point to keep our space. And we also launched our latest wig, for those keeping track. You know, it's, it's something that we do as a full organization to meet our mission. And this time, we took a wise approach and tried not to add much, too much additional work for staff and really tried to focus on opening up these buildings and launching these products like the, the website and our, our backbone ILS system. So it's a ton of work. And it is, you know, going to be transformational throughout the organization. And it just seems like the right thing to do to, to really try and focus on that system-wide. For our DEI work, we'll be offering up a training on understanding implicit bias this month. These are trainings that are only open to our staff. So it allows us to learn alongside our peers and, and really apply it to the setting of the SPL organization. So if folks aren't able to attend, we do record them, and they can view them online at a later point. As far as collections go, you'll be seeing a merging of our Starbucks and top titles into the Lucky Day collection. This will be a collection that features the most popular books and customer favorite authors, both titles and, and favorites. And these are titles that are available immediately with no holds. So they come on a first-come, first-served basis and will circulate for three weeks. I think it's going to be something that's, that's pretty popular with the public in a really great way to encourage folks to come into the branches to pick up material and browse that, that new shelving area. We also have an update with our 24/7 library dispensers. These would be like the machines that we put into the West Central Community Center a few years ago. We've identified our first location to be the new Gonzaga Family Haven. And it's a, it's an apartment complex for families and children that are transitioning out of homelessness. It's at the foothills in Hamilton, near Gonzaga Prep. And we're still looking at other areas within the community. Nothing close to final at this point. We might have an update in the next few months. But looking at Shiloh Hills and the LeTo Valley area for right now. And finally, our, our star spotlight for July went to Nini from our, our finance team. She was a problem solver extraordinaire when we decided to help out the city with the Cooling Center and really worked her magic in, in making sure that everyone got paid appropriately and didn't create a major snafu in our system. So thank you to Nini for, for helping us along and helping the community along and keeping everyone safe. So that's what I have for this month. Is, are there any questions?
Andrew, remind me how many 24/7 library kiosks we have?
There will be a minimum of three that we put into the system. We may have, you know, we'll, we'll be monitoring budgets for bond budgets, but we had promised a minimum of three to council.
All right, any other questions for Andrew? All right.
Laura, this is Natalie Hildebrand. Andrew, I do have a question. It's been asked of me. With the mayor requiring face masks be worn on all basically city properties, is that something that the library is looking at for their customers also, effective starting tomorrow?
We're going to continue to monitor the situation, but at this point, no. We're not doing that. We, we took the lead in, in requiring staff and keeping staff safe. But at this time, we're not requiring the public. We are strongly encouraging people, as the CDC does, when they're entering our facility.
Thank you.
That can always change depending on how we see infection rates throughout the area.
All right, anything else for Andrew? Okay, thank you, Andrew. Well, Council is on report. We heard at the beginning that Kate won't be joining us today, so we won't have that. And now we have the communications report, Amanda.
Hi. So as Andrew mentioned, the, the highlight for this month has been organizing the ribbon cutting for the Hive last week. So many staff members really contributed to that opening from facilities to programming and everyone in between and put a lot of heart and effort into making the program a success, not to mention just building the building. And it was also just, I'll also note, it was just really nice to see a lot of our coworkers' masked faces because that was like a reunion of sorts. Many of us hadn't seen each other in person for more than a year, so kind of a little mini reunion celebration as well. Related to the Hive, we'll be placing advertising in the annual manual and the Fall Parks and Rec Activity Guide about Hive being open and that it's available for booking meeting space. And then we'll be evaluating in the coming weeks, you know, what else we want to do as far as advertising and marketing the services available at that location. Another, another highlight from this month was the Spokane is Reading Committee, of which I'm a part, and Eva Silverstone and Riva Dean. We announced our 20th anniversary reading list. Again, this year, similar to last year, we're not able to do an in-person program. But we're doing a reading list, and in this, this reading list, the Spokane, previous Spokane is Reading authors, all selected books or a portion of them, selected books that they recommend that brought them joy or happiness or made them laugh in the last year when we're all kind of looking for maybe a little bit of escape. So if you haven't seen that yet, check it out, and that, of course, is in partnership with SCLD and Antis as well. And that's an alternative to doing an in-person event this year again. Hopefully, next year, we'll be able to do an in-person event again and use one of our great new spaces to all come together and meet an author. And then now, our big focus is just preparing on the next event, opening Hilliard. So getting all the communication ready for that, making sure internally we're prepared for that as well as working with Spokane Public Schools, who's, who are leading the, the process and the planning for, for an opening event for Hilliard. Our top social media posts this month were about the children's areas as well as posts about the Hive. And at the time of writing this report, we had earned, one earned media spot where Eva Silverstone got up at 4:00 in the morning to talk with KXOI about Spokane is Reading live on television. And then after submitting this report, we did get some really nice coverage also about the Hive, and I'll make sure to include that in the next month's report. But Eva got up again 4:00 AM in the morning to talk about the Hive on KXOI. So Eva, I owe you, I don't know, something really great, but mostly thank you, thank you. And so we also had an, an article in the Spokesman, and Crem came out as well and, and shot some footage of the Hive as well on the opening day. So, and that concludes my report, although I will be speaking to you in a moment about the website as well. I want to give you a preview of the website tonight as well.
Okay, I have a question. Where can one get that fabulous t-shirt?
Ah, good question. So I bought a small, a small Ah, good question. So I bought a small set of them for people who would be working at the Hive opening. But we got so many requests during the event to sell the shirts that I'll be adding them to our Zazzle store as soon as I have a moment.
That's great. I was at a conference in Florida and missed the opening of the Hive, but I was able to watch it on social media and, or I think it was social media, maybe it was KXOI. Nice job. Nice job, Laura.
I just, you know, wrote a little talk, but they did all the work.
Nice job to everyone.
If anyone is interested, we do have a full recording that City Cable 5 came and did. We also recorded it on Facebook Live stream, but also City Cable 5 recorded it, you know, with high quality audio and everything. So I can send out that link as well if anyone wants to relive the experience.
All right. Any other questions for Amanda on the communications report? Okay, we will turn to new business, which also starts with website redesign with Amanda.
Off right away. Great. Okay, I'm going to share my screen. Can everyone see my screen here? All right, so I'm excited to share this project with you today. We've been working on it for a long time. It's been a long time coming, and that is a website redesign. So we're getting pretty close to getting to a point where we can launch it, so I would love to share it with you all. So I'll share with you a quote first. "A bad website is like a flat tire. You can't go anywhere until you change it." We, I think everyone recognizes our current website is pretty bloated, a lot of, you know, a lot of information on there that's outdated, hard to find. And so it's been, it's been in the back of my mind a priority for a long time now. You know, the other things are going on. We've had a lot of competing priorities, but we also understand that, you know, a lot of people are going to come into these new buildings and our website should match that in-person experience. Not only that, but some people will never come into our buildings and may only want to use a digital experience. And we want them to have that same caliber experience as if they were coming into a physical location on the website. So we've put a lot of work into planning and designing this website, and I'm going to take you through it. So we've gone through several phases here. So phase one, two, three, four, you see there on the side of the screen. We're really, we're really on the verge of phase four right now. So this is all work that we've done in the past. I also want to note that we kind of had some stops and starts with this project where maybe we were going to work with an agency to design it. And we realized the type of website we wanted could cost upwards of $250,000 to have an agency plan, design, create this site. And we realized we had the knowledge and experience in-house to do this for, you know, for the price of our salaries instead of, you know, working with an agency. And so that's how we are here today. I would say that me, Skylar, and our IT team have been all the heavy lifters on this project. And then we're also engaging with our subject matter experts, who are all the people in our organization who do some of the, you know, who are experts in the topics that are covered on our website. But all of this has been designed and done in-house, and I couldn't have done it without Skylar and Colin Stewart, who's been coding and helping us through making all the right decisions technology-wise on this. So some of our goals for this project are to reduce the number of pages and complexity of our existing site. Our existing site has 1,000 pages, maybe more. Our future site map has 99, under 100 pages. We easily, we want people to easily connect with all the library that has to offer, both existing customers who know what they're looking for and potential customers who don't know what the library has to offer. And then, as I mentioned, we really want to reflect the modern experience of our physical spaces. So we want people to go to the website and then come into our space and feel like they're the same organization. So our objectives are to have a user-friendly website with just the information needed and nothing more. So you'll see in these designs, there is substantially less text on these pages. Not just number of pages, but the copy on the pages, way less. Simple and streamlined, a less is more approach should be taken. We don't want to put every single detail of everything on this website. We want just what you need to get the information to get started. We want to inform customers about library events, services, and collections. We want a sense of discovery. We really want this to feel like a Spokane website where you can have a sense of discovery and learning and something uniquely Spokane and hopefully come to our site and kind of discover new things and not just come get what you want and leave, but want to linger a little bit, see what blog posts we have, what other information we have to share. And then, of course, a focus on our digital collections. Customers should be able to easily find and access and use our digital collections. And by digital collections, I mean our eBooks, our streaming services, and our digital collection, like our Inland Northwest Special Collections Digital Collection. So right now, you know, I still get comments like, oh, I didn't know you had eBooks. We don't want people to come to us and say that anymore. We want it to be easy to surface and find and use on our website. So I surveyed our staff and we had asked them some words to describe our current site and some words to describe our future site. And so the current site, clunky, messy, outdated, wordy, trying, more wordy, informative, complicated, confusing, bright, confusing, or better than most library websites, which was a kind of backhanded compliment, but I'll take it, and earnest, confusing, and sprawling. And then what do we want our future site to look like from our staff perspective? Cohesive, browsable, dynamic, content-findable, accessible, exciting, informative, engaging, interactive, informative, exciting, clear, organized, obvious. So keeping those things in mind, we did some site research. We looked at other library websites. What library websites are doing this well? We took a lot of inspiration from Toledo Public Library, and that's this one with the L logo on the top there in the dark blue. New York Public Library, Skokie Public Library. And then we also looked at sites that aren't library websites because a lot of our consumers aren't aren't just going to the library website. We're using Netflix. We're using Airbnb. We're using Yelp. And what does that user experience feel like? And we need to try and match that. Otherwise, people are just going to go to these other places where they can get these services or activities. And even though they're, you have to pay for them, people will go to those and they're used to experiencing a website like that. And then we selected a platform. So our platform is kind of a combination. We're using Communico, which you've heard me talk about a lot. It is our event management system, our room booking system, all of that. And you can create widgets in it. So you've got kind of all of some of your information set in this Communico site where you can edit things easily. But then it also has a website platform. And we started down the road of trying to develop the website in Communico. And we realized, Colin realized, really not me, Colin realized that this just wasn't going to meet our technology needs. We needed something a little bit more powerful, a little bit more functional, easier to use, and something that would create the site visually and user experience-wise that I envisioned. And so he came up with a solution of using WordPress, which is our current, is what we currently use for our site, with a layer over it of something called Elementor, which has been an amazing tool that helps us edit and build all of the site content ourselves. Skylar and I have just been using this development layer over WordPress that's allowing us to create the pages that Colin has set up for us with his coding skills. So we looked at our top traffic and I looked at 2019 because 2020 is, you know, very strange for traffic. So I wanted to use 2019 as our baseline for what our top pages are that people come to. And it's our locations pages, account pages, meeting rooms, eBooks. So here are the top 35 pages. But I took this information and we built it into a comprehensive site map. So what you're looking at here is what the bare bones of the future website is going to look like. You've got your home, you've got search, you've got sign-in, sign-up. And then the top level navigation will be books, movies, and digital, locations, events, get help with research and learn, kids and teens, and about us. And then all of these squares that you're seeing here, the gray squares, are individual pages that we're creating for the site. So think about our site now, and I said it's got more than 1,000 pages. We're narrowing it down to this finite number of pages here. And another detail that I'll mention now, as far as our ongoing strategy, is real heavy reliance on the blog for future content. We're developing a blog team internally who will write blog content for our new website. And that also really helps our search engine optimization, where if we're creating relevant, interesting content for our community, it will drive people to our website who might not be searching for eBooks, but might be searching for something relevant that's happening in Spokane and will have information about it on our website, on our blog. So following making the site map, we made a very detailed content manifest where we listed out every single page we needed to create and write. And then we, Skylar and I divvied it up and have written almost all of this content now and created it into the pages, designed the pages, and doing a lot of research of what's on the existing website and what we need to keep and what we just need to get rid of or rewrite completely. And then now we get kind of into the fancy, the fun stuff with the actual design of the pages. So now we're building a better website. We want an offer above the fold. We want obvious calls to action. We want bite-sized breakdowns of your revenue streams. Now, this is from Story Brand, so that's a book that I've been very into lately by Donald Miller. So revenue streams, I'm putting in quotes because obviously we don't have those, but bite-sized breakdown of what we offer and very few words. So take out as much words as we can, just get the basics there. And we've also introduced a fresh new color palette. So we are introducing a deep plum, a magenta, and a yellow, a gold. And the gold is really great because it ties to the Hive. And we're also taking a look at our existing color palette and we'll kind of marry these together and you'll see more of that to come. But that brings us to the new homepage. So here is a mock-up of what the homepage will look like. We've got an alert at the top, which wouldn't always be there. But if anything's closed, we'll have a bright alert at the top. Top navigation menu bar here. Search is what a lot of people come to our website for, or many, most people come to. And it will have a dropdown, so you can search the catalog or the website here in the search bar. All of these boxes here will be featured blog content from our website. So we'll be able to highlight things that are happening at the library very obviously. So you're thinking, like, if you think of that sliding tile that we have on our existing site, research shows that no one really sees what's on those sliding tiles, except maybe the first one because they're rotating. This is a way to surface a lot of that information that people want to explore and navigate through without putting it in a sliding tile. We'll have upcoming events and a carousel of new books. Oops, sorry. And then, and then some footer information as well. But that's what the homepage will look like. Here they are in, you know, web browser and also what the mobile experience will look like. We know from our data and analytics that, I can't remember the percentage right now, but we know a lot of people come to our website on their mobile device or on their tablet. And so we need to make sure to start with a mobile-first design. And so that's what you see here on the right. Something about the menu style, you know, when I showed you that site map, there were a lot of little boxes underneath headings. And that's what I'm showing here is that you'll have books, movies, and more. And then we have what I'm calling kind of a fat menu where you can see all of the items kind of underheadings at once, so you can easily navigate to what you want. And I also, I use the Tootsie Pop analogy. If you remember the commercial where you can, how many licks does it take to get to the center of a Tootsie Pop? I don't want you to have to click nine times to get to Libby to look at our eBooks. So on this menu, for instance, you'll be able to click Books, Movies, and More, see Overdrive Libby, click that. It'll take you right to Overdrive. You won't need a page of multiple, multiple things to explain to you like what Libby and Overdrive is. Here is an example of our locations page. And one thing here, this is where the widgets from Communico really come in, is that the, this will automatically populate with upcoming events all the time. And it'll be populated with upcoming events that are at Shadle. So if you go to the Shadle Library page, you want to know where it is, what's there. And then you'll also get to see what the upcoming events are. And also, this is obviously stock photos, but we'll have really nice photos of what the library looks like so you can take a virtual tour, so you really know what you're going to get before you come to the library. And here are some of the info pages. So we've got an information page that's real simple. It's just like a service that we might offer or something that you might find at the library. And then we'll have more detailed pages, what we're calling Info Deluxe, that have a lot of detail. This is the Business Lab page where details about the coworking, one-on-one support, booking, one-on-one support, and then a long list of all of our research tools in nuggets of little boxes. So not a lot of information, just enough to get you started on your, like, on a database. And here's an example of a resource page, and this would just be a list of resources very easily organized. And there's a side-by-side of all of the pages. And then that, so that kind of leads me to where we are now. So our current status, 99% of the content has been written and built on the new site. We're working on final coding tweaks, making sure everything's going to work together. There's, we're getting a little help from a contractor who's going to help us with some of those coding questions. Colin can't answer himself, making sure we have all our third-party services plugged in. And we'll be user testing the site. And then hopefully later in 2021, we'll be launching. I don't have a specific launch date for you yet, but, but my goal was to get it launched before all of our new branches opened. And granted, one of them has opened now, but I still think we're going to be opening, you know, launching this site right around when some of our other branches are opening. So we'll get a fresh user experience online that reflects our in-person experience. And the more we've been working in this new site, the harder it is to go back into our old site and update that information. So we're really eager and anxious to get this launched. And that is my presentation. Do you have any questions for me?
Amanda, I do have a question. I remember when we were taking a look at changing the logo and changing the look. And there was a color palette that was prescribed to us at this time. Are the colors that you're using on the website, are they part of that palette?
That's a great question. So no, they're not yet, but I'm going to be updating our existing palette and marrying them together. So, you know, it's a, it's a great time to kind of give us a little bit of a boost. So I'm not abandoning all those colors, but we'll be marrying them together in a really nice way that I think is even more contemporary, kind of brings us into 2021, 2022. So bringing in some of these new colors, abandoning some of our old colors, but also incorporating them together. So, and I can, I can bring you an update on that in the coming months as well.
But our current logo will be featured in the new website. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you, Amanda. It looks great. What great work. We're doing, we do work on our website too, and you're hitting all the right notes here. So congratulations. And I'm amazed, and I'm amazed that you all are doing it yourself. That's wonderful.
Thank you very much.
Well, I'm excited about less pages, so it'll be easier to find stuff.
Good.
All right. Any other questions for Amanda? Okay, well, now our next item of new business is library hours with Karis again.
And I'm actually going to queue up this one because like with everything we do, I'll queue it up and then Karis gets to answer all the hard questions and do the actual work. So as we had mentioned last month, City Council did signal their support for expanded hours for the organization to serve the community. So what we have here is a proposal of what those hours would be. Let me just bring up some information here because I can never remember these. So just to remind you, what our old hours are, they're really confusing. They're a headache to look at. We've got things like Eastside Hilliard and Indian Trail closed Sunday, Monday, open 12 to 8 on Tuesday, and then Wednesday to Saturday, they're open 10 to 6. You got South Hill and Shadle, they're open Sundays, 1 to 5, Monday and Tuesday, 10 to 8. But then you switch to Wednesday, Saturday schedule, which is a 10 to 6. And then, you know, Central Library, that one's just got to stick out like a sore thumb. You've got a Monday, Thursday, You've got a Monday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, 10 to six, and a Tuesday and Wednesday, 10 to eight. I'm sure it made sense at some point to someone. But we're trying to do, just like you're seeing with the website, is streamline, you know, the experience for for customers. So we're proposing that for all the libraries, we would be open Monday through Thursday, nine to seven, Friday, Saturday, 10 to five, and Sunday, 12 to four. The Hive would be a little bit different. That would be either by appointment for use dictated, largely by calendar of events, either the community is doing something or the artists and residents are doing something for the public, but but largely guided by that calendar of events that that would be offered there. So what you're you're looking at is all libraries are open seven days a week. We got four evenings a week and we're also opening up one hour earlier during the week. So that's, that's the basis of what we're going for. But we'd also like to introduce a new component or concept, which is called our self-service hours. These would be hours, like our nine to 10 hour, Monday through Thursday. On Friday, Saturday, there is a typo on there. It should be 10 to 11 for self-service. Sunday would be completely self-service. We are basing this based on data of past use during slow times. Obviously, we don't have data for that that first hour of nine to 10, but we're just, we want to, we want to offer it up and set this expectation out to the public that it would be a different experience. So during a self-service time, you could come in, you can check out, you can return, you can pick up holds, you can browse, you can use the meeting and event space, you can use the computers and the wifi. There just wouldn't be as much support there for you. So it would be no IT support, no CIRC support and no reference in readers advisory. And part of the reason that we're, we're, we're thinking of doing this or hoping to do this is we have invested a lot of money in our self-service equipment. And this is a really great way to offer up sort of that, that quick experience for folks, commuters, especially during that nine to 10 hour for the public. And so we would still have staff in the building as a, as a measure of security. But we would have signs posted that say, hey, welcome to the library. You're here during a self-service time. We'll have more staff on hand starting at 10 o'clock. I've seen this model done in university settings. And in fact, I've worked in one that this worked really well, as well as in when I went to Arhus in Denmark, Copenhagen, they also utilize the concept like this too, where the library, once it hits that point of, you know, five or six, whatever, whatever we designate, it turns into a self-service for the customer and it seemed to work really well. You're starting to see more libraries in the country adapt technology that would make this happen. And certainly we've been looking at that technology for our after-hours access that we're not quite ready to launch yet. We want to get some experience around this self-service concept first and and, you know, see how the the public reacts to it. Now, I will note that we do, this is, this is just a concept at this point. This is a template for how we would like to approach it. If we find that in different communities, this isn't working, or if this is not working at all, we can certainly go back to, you know, full service and offer up those hours. But the hope is, is that this would even further help us to expand what the service is in the community. You know, but this would be sort of that, that minimum level of service that that we would be approaching. So with that, this is where I disappear. And then if you have any tough questions, Karis knows the data and was really the, the brains behind this. So any questions or thoughts for us?
I do have a question. I know that in some of our branches, we will have security, correct? Security services. Will we have security services at those branches even during the self-service hours?
So our security service hours are still being determined at this moment, but there's a strong likelihood that they would correspond with those. So at the very least, the self-service hours will have at least two staff members in the building at any given time. And if we found the need, we would make sure that we had security there. But as you might expect, different branches in different situations require different security presence.
And I can just, I can anticipate that there might be someone who comes in not understanding perhaps the self-service that will demand service. And so I, I would, I would hope that there would be a protocol established for that to, you know, keep the staff safe and and with a minimum of hassle.
Mary, you've just stumbled upon our number one concern. And so making sure that we have the ability to educate the public about what this hour or two-hour span actually means and just getting to the point where they know what to expect when they come in so that our staff isn't overburdened, that's a big point of stress for staff right now. So that it's one that we're trying to alleviate. But ultimately, our staff is behind the concept that a person who shows up at 9:00 AM and is able to get access to our building is better off than the person who shows up to a locked door. And so while, you know, our efforts to figure out how to deal with exactly the situation you're describing are still varied and kind of up in the air, we all know that we want to get to the point where we can figure out how to deal with it so we can expand that access to the community. If we're able to make these self-service hours work, it actually results in a 25% increase in hours each week. So I mean, the, the risk is well worth it because of the potential gains that we could see.
And I can see that. And I, I think that the expanded hours are fantastic. I think that the community needs them and I think it's great. I just, I am thinking about the staff. And and I'm also wondering, when I look and I see that the, there'll be standard opening and closing duties. And will the staff that is there, will they have eyes on anyone who's in there? Again, I think I'm talking about security at this point. Or will they, or will they be back office, I guess, is what I'm asking.
There's two elements to that. For the most part, they'll be back office. But when you're talking about a library worker, their back office usually happens out on the library floor as well. So they're often, they're popping around, pulling materials from the shelves. So it's not as if they're sequestered in the back room and you just don't ever see them. They're just out and about doing their own thing, trying to get stuff ready for the next day or that morning, whatever the case may be. That said, you know, we have equipped each and every building like Fort Knox in terms of security cameras and security systems. So the ability for us to have eyes on the places where we don't physically have bodies is much higher than it was in the past.
And my last question, you kind of hit on this, Karis, is how, how are the staff members reacting to this? How's the communication back and forth been about it? You said that there were some concerns that have been addressed, but what, what's the general feeling from staff about this?
So in general, staff has been very supportive of the expanded hours, but very skeptical about whether we can get to a point where customers recognize and accept that there's no service available, one of during the self-service hours. One of the things that we've really amped up over the last several years is our customer service and our personal touch. So it's very hard to shift away from that. But I think that if we can clearly understand the parameters and make them very concrete, then both the community and staff will ultimately be able to recognize that this service is, is a benefit, even if it does have a couple of drawbacks. So, you know, the likelihood that at some point there's going to be somebody who shows up at 9:00 AM and absolutely needs to print this absolutely important thing and doesn't know how, very high, very high. And equipping our staff to deal with that in one way or another is going to be one of the things that's going to be absolutely essential and making sure that this whole experiment does not become just an exercise in stress management.
And I think that, and I'm, I'm talking to the other board members here. I, I'm, I'm absolutely willing to give this a try, but can we, can we set a time period to evaluate how it's going out there? So implement the hours with a review after 90 days or something like that? Is that too short? I just, I just, and I, and I think that it's a great idea. And I, and I have, I have confidence that with communication that it can work. But the examples that you gave Andrew of universities in Denmark, you know, I don't know how it's going to work in Spokane and, and what the level of help when we open our doors for our community, you know, what they're going to need. So I would feel comfortable approving this if we were assured of a review period after a period of time.
We can certainly do that. And we'll also have the benefit of, you know, having spaced out openings of our new facilities as well. So we'll be able to adjust. We really just wanted to, to educate the board on what we're looking at, just a difference between full service and self-service. We don't, you know, we might not be tied to, we might, we might do this and after the first week be like, yeah. Maybe, maybe we adjust. I think it would be a mistake not to try. Really what we're asking the board for this agenda item is really just to approve the open hours. And we'll, we'll play with and report back on how those self-service hours are going. Absolutely. It's a new concept and you need to feel, you know, insured that we're doing the community, giving the community good service.
I also want to throw in there, Mary, that we have an internal component of this process that has a review period at six months. If you would like us to bump that up, we can, but that is the period of time we were thinking we might be actually able to measure that kind of sentiment.
I think it should be, I think it should be bumped up a little bit. I think that it would also maybe quell some of the concerns maybe that, that staff might have. But, you know, what Andrew said also gave me a lot of confidence in what was going on. You, you know, you could decide after a week, this isn't working. But, but I'm, I'm good with, with all of this and I'm definitely good with the hours, the extended hours.
And so I actually, I had a question as well, and that is, are there, other than universities in Denmark, are there any US communities that have successfully deployed self-service hours and educated their community on what that means?
Yeah. So, oh, all right. Andrew, you want to take that one?
So I know even in Washington, Fort Vancouver, they, they're, they have an entire facility that is self-service. It is in a more rural area. So that is a difference. But yes, they're, they're, you're, you're seeing some US libraries, you know, adopt this. I think that we might be a little bit unique and Karis, jump in please, in that we have sort of a hybrid model like this, but you might have, you might have looked at more examples than than I have.
Yeah, absolutely. More often than not, these systems are used for kind of after-hours access versus the self-service that we're discussing. That said, we've seen the advent of self-service libraries cropping up all over the country. One of the places that I'm immediately thinking of is Oxnard, California. There's one of their mall branches, which is kind of like our temporary Shadle to be continued branch. It's never had a staff member in it from its inception. And the whole concept is that the entire thing is just so well-designed that customers are able to navigate through it entirely on their own. And that's kind of where we've set our aspirational aim at. But yeah, recognizing that there are some unknowns for the Spokane community.
Thank you. Well, I think that expanded hours would be wonderful. Oftentimes, when I'm looking to use the library, I'm looking at it as a place I can go to get away from the noise of the other things in my life so that I can really focus on something. And I don't need any staff help for that. I just need the library to offer me a quiet place with some resources that I can get my, I can get my. I think that there'll be a lot of people that will appreciate these hours. But I also support Mary's requests for, and I, and I think perhaps considering several reviews, a shorter term one, look at it at six months. I can also see that as we are still dealing with COVID, there are a lot of people that are continuing to stay home and not be out in our community and that there may be members of the community that you feel like, well, after six months, everybody should understand what this self-service hours thing is. But really you still are having more and more people that are finally stepping out for the first time. So it may be, it may take a little longer than we think for everybody to really understand how they work. So I, I, I definitely want to throw my voice behind support for making sure that the staff is comfortable and that, that this doesn't create an exercise in stress management as, as you phrased it, Karis.
Great point, Laura.
Well, Laura, I am prepared to make a motion to, for us to approve the implementation of the proposed extended hours.
All right. Excellent.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Hearing everybody say aye, then that means none of us are opposed. So motion passes. All right. So are there any other agenda items we need to add or changes at this point?
I have none.
All right. Then were there any public comments that we needed to read and address?
Let me just check one last time. No.
Okay. And our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, September 21st, 2021. And I don't believe that we have an executive session today. So with that, we will adjourn the meeting.
And we'll keep next month's virtual as well. I've got to move it regardless. I need to move a kid into the University of Washington, so I will not be in town. So this works out good.
All right. Well, good. Okay. Excellent. Great to see everybody. Good job.
Thank you very much, everybody. Take care.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.